All right, we're going to move to item eighteen. Consideration of inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on the secured tax roll. This again is presented by Mr. Morrison.
Thank you.
I'm Tony, by the way, thanks. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Katrina Woods, Customer Service Manager, for putting together this presentation and her service to the ratepayers throughout the year. Katrina will help with any more technical questions that you have. She's right here in the front row. Katrina and her team worked very hard to help ratepayers stay off of this list. Our customer service staff wear many hats in their day to day. One of them is watching over the utility funds revenues on behalf of their ratepayers. Customer service sometimes comes in the form of urging and helping ratepayers manage delinquencies using a variety of tools to notify, educate, and ease the burden of paying. An impression can arise that the city is the only stakeholder on a delinquent account. But in reality, each ratepayer is responsible for their connection and use, and every payment not collected becomes the burden of the other seventeen thousand nine hundred ninety-nine properties, give or take, in the system. Katrina's staff are the most successful revenue recovery outfit we have ever had, including companies we used in the old days. Her staff is diligent about collecting final bills and keeps the entire system in mind when measuring fairness. Please do recall that discontinuance of service for nonpayment has not been an option per the governor's executive order going back to April of 2020. Since COVID, our list of unpaid active accounts increased from an average of one hundred fifty accounts per month to over eight hundred. This is a combination of both tenant and owner-held accounts. Our municipal code states that property owners are ultimately responsible for their balances, regardless of agreements between tenant and owner. Outside of normal billing activities, which allow for owners to receive a copy of a tenant's bill monthly, owners were not notified of balances prior to this hearing. Notices were mailed to owners on June second. The notice was printed in English, Spanish, and Punjabi. The California, there are utility bill relief programs out there. The California COVID-19 Rent Relief Program provides financial assistance for unpaid utilities to income-eligible California renters. Customers were notified of the federal assistance program. We provided a billing insert at the end of May, as well as messaging on the billing statement itself. We also advertised the program on our website via phone and at our counter. A new funding program was recently released as well. Low-Income Household Water Assistance Program, which the city plans to apply for once available. The, this is the acronym, LIH WAP Funding, will be distributed annually through 2023 through Health and Human Services Office of Community Services as grants to U.S. states, territories, tribes, and tribal organizations. The grants will be, the grants will assist eligible low-income households by providing funds to owners or operators of public water systems or treatment works to reduce arrearsages of and rates charged to such households for such services. Since the notice to owners were mailed on June second, eighty-one accounts have been paid in full, and eight accounts have established payment plans. These figures change daily, as we will continue to hear from ratepayers and receive payments right up until the time where we need to send the list off, the lien list off to the county. One account holder did inform us that they were waiting for funding from the federal assistance program, Housing is Key, and they provided a copy of their approval letter, and the account was placed on a pending payment plan status. And so the recommendation is to adopt a resolution to include delinquent accounts on the secured tax roll. May I answer any questions?
Okay, before I open it up to the public for any questions or comments, anything from the council?
Yes, through the mayor. I'm glad that you described the difference between the owner and the tenant. And so I'm not clear still, honestly, I'm not clear with if the owner, you know, property owner would have rights to the home, but who is responsible for paying whatever we're asking? Is it the tenant, or is it the owner?
So the typically, the typical tenant-owner relationship that we see, the tenant signs up for water, puts the water in their own name, and is responsible for paying the bill. However, our municipal ordinance, our municipal code, states that no matter what arrangement a tenant and an owner have, it's the property owner's ultimate responsibility to be sure that the water bill, the utility bill, is paid.
Okay, so if the owner continues to be delinquent like these that we have, then we put these liens, what would occur once the liens are put in place?
So the lien is a tax roll lien, and so this, the amount that we submit will go onto the tax bills and be due next round. So they'll be December tenth and March tenth. It'll be fifty percent, December tenth and fifty percent.
Are there property taxes?
On the property taxes, that's correct.
It would go on the property taxes of the property owner?
The property itself by parcel number.
And would we shut off service?
We are not allowed to shut off service at this time due to the governor's executive order back to April of 2020.
And if that order was changed, would we shut off service?
Not for these properties. We wouldn't double up, so these properties will be remedied through the property tax process. Any new charges that occur in going forward, discontinuance of service would be an option.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, I have two speaker cards. First, I would like to invite Robert or Bob Egles, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Bob Egles, A-G-L-E-S. I own a rental house in Yuba City. I have not received a cent in rent since January of 2020. So do the math, that's nineteen months to date. I have no belief that that will be remedied or changed, at least, until, and I do have belief at this point that the eviction moratorium will end on September thirtieth. I'm hopeful that it will be. The eviction proceedings on that property were started in February of 2020. That was before COVID wasn't even much of a topic of discussion, and it certainly wasn't a policy at that point. The eviction was started in late February, early March, again, before the eviction moratorium went into place. And I would point out that the tenant did not fall on hard times because of COVID. It wasn't a job loss, it wasn't anything, they just, I honestly can't tell you why things have fallen into the state that they have, but rent wasn't being paid, and I took my recourse through the eviction process. I would ask you this. If we, as a society, want to allow tenants to live in houses and forbid owners from evicting them, why should I, as an individual, be responsible for payment of their charges? I appreciate the Water Department's discussion of contracts with, between owners/tenants, ultimate responsibility. I understand all that, but they can go back and see that the water bill is contracted in the tenant's name. They're not paying it, so ultimately, it falls on me. But again, if government mandate forbids me from possessing my property, why is it my responsibility to? Can I time up? Why is it my responsibility to pay for those charges? And I would just point out, I believe that the Constitution of the United States forbids confiscation of property without compensation. And if I can't have possession of my property, I don't see how that's not confiscation. Can any of you clarify that for me?
I'll try. The, and please, staff, pick up if I misspeak. First and foremost, the city of Yuba City is not the governmental entity that is saying that you can't evict anybody. So unfortunately, as much as we may want to have some remedy for those of, in our community, who may be adversely impacted by a decision made by the state government, legally, we have no means to do so. So even if we agree with what you're saying, and I would leave that up to each individual, we don't have the legislative, or the power, or the reality of making that change here in this building.
I understand that, and I appreciate that. I don't believe that it was the city of Yuba City, nor the county of Sutter, that instituted these policies.
Right.
But nevertheless, where does that leave me?
Well, like a lot of folks who own property, they're stuck.
And certainly, I'm not the only one in this position. I mean, I know that there are many others, in Yuba City, in Sutter County, and throughout the state. So it's a problem. I'm also aware, and it's just been in the last week to ten days, that it was mentioned earlier, that the housing is key. There may be some remedies available, and I'm aware of that, I haven't had a chance to research it. Those policies, the new policies in the housing scheme, because there's been policies in the past, and it's pretty much left out landlords. Everything that's been done is for the tenant. So, anyway, I think I've used my allotted time, and I appreciate your indulgence here. Do you have any questions for me?
The only question I have for staff is, I know that you are actively engaged with finding relief for these types of situations. I think it's incumbent upon us to make in those situations, and it sounds like you're doing that, and I know we all appreciate your efforts in trying to work through these challenges, I guess, if we can continue to do that. Because I think this is certainly not a one-off. I think there's probably multiples of this out there, where if we can find a way to, you know, bridge the gap, I think we would want to do that as a city.
And I would also like to thank staff. I received a letter personally with notification of this meeting, and thank you for sending that. Most of the stuff I get from either the tax collector or the city, you know, regarding that property, I put in a file right here. So it's a big hairy mess. I don't know what else to say.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess the only thing I can say is, I believe that with the regulations that, as they exist, that ultimately, I'm going to end up paying the water bill if we can't work through this Housing is Key and other programs. But I would at least request that any penalties be deleted from, you know, if I have to pay the bill, I have to pay the bill, but to add penalties on top of that, under the circumstances, I think is additionally grossly unfair.
It is unfair. It's very hard for landlord. We are not very rich. We need to pay the bill, we need to pay the loan, we need to pay everything.
Understand. I hear your request for us to consider the penalty piece, and I'm sure that we will do that as a council. Thank you. You're welcome.
I basically have the same problem as this gentleman here.
Could you please, just so the people in there watching can hear you as well, if you don't mind?
Well, my card is there, so I'll wait till my turn.
Okay, it's your turn. Go ahead. Yes, sir.
Okay. The situation that I'm going to talk about.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I do, for our record, we just need your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Dick Thomassian, T-H-O-M-A-S-I-A-N.
Thank you.
All right, sorry about that.
No worries.
My son is deployed, and he's going to be out of the country within very few days. And he just received a notice in the mail, I mean, I guess it was in the mail, telling him that he owes fourteen hundred and four dollars on his water bill. Then after I got done talking to the lady in the front, that bill has gone to one thousand five hundred ninety dollars and forty cents. It's not that we don't want to pay the bill, it's the fact that when that person doesn't pay the water bill for a month or two, no notices are sent. This thing has been laying in their office for sixteen to eighteen months without notifying anybody, and I think that is very wrong. It's not the amount, it's that owners, if the landlord is going to be responsible to pay those bills, why shouldn't he be notified within two months when the bill isn't paid? I have his power of attorney, and the military lawyers are telling him, the reason I'm here is because they told him that nobody can prosecute him or bring him to any kind of judgment now because he's deployed. Okay? It's a simple thing. It's not that he doesn't want to pay the bill. What happened here is, he came to the city and told the city people to turn the water off from the house that he was living in, because his ex-wife was going to come in there and live, and he wanted to make sure that she was responsible to pay those bills. So she came to the office and conducted the business, and she hasn't paid the bills. Now they're going to tap my son's property taxes, and it's going to put him in bad credit situation, because nobody, I was told that because of the COVID, they couldn't, you know, supply this information, which, you know, if they're coming to work, they should be able to supply that information. And I'm sure if any of you is in that situation, you want to know within two months that this person is not paying his bill. I am a property owner also. I make sure that they come here and they sign for the water rights. I'm not going to do it for them, because I'll turn it off. If they're needy, I will help them. And I think something has to happen here with the city to notify the owners in time. So I went and told her, I says, from now on, any bills coming in, send it to my address. I'll pay it. But I'm not going to wait sixteen, twenty payments before I pay the bill. This bill right now is one thousand five hundred ninety dollars and forty cents. It's too much for a working person to pay that, excluding me. I will help him if he needs the help. But what if it were somebody else that can't help himself? It's a simple thing. If somebody owes you money, or you owe somebody money, you know, you need to come to some kind of a conclusion to take care of this. And this is where we are right now. It's fifteen hundred, and some people are rude when you talk to them about it, because they don't want to listen to you. And they told us that the military lawyers can't do anything. Not that I want them to do anything, but he needs some kind of a representation from someplace.
Mr. City Manager, I think it would probably be worthwhile to meet with Mr. Thomassian and work through this issue. There's, I can see multiple things going on here. I do believe, and maybe staff can correct me, that property owners do have the ability to get bills if they request that. Perhaps we need to go out once again and make that aware, so that they are co-noticed along with the tenants. I think that is something that we've discussed before, and maybe we could raise that up again.
Mayor, we'll take that and run with that. We've been talking about increasing the education curve, and so we will do that as well, as well as work with Mr. Thomassian.
Our staff will reach.
For your information, I didn't even know until now, since you spoke, that we have the right to request.
Understand.
Such things, you know? Most people don't know that. Because in my opinion, if somebody doesn't, if you don't pay your PJ any for two months, they're going to turn the electricity off. Why shouldn't this happen with a water bill?
The reason, the reason they can't shut the water off, I think, has been mentioned in here before, is that there's legislation out there that prevents them from doing so. Current legislation.
Well, that may be true, but at least notify the owner.
And that's, I think you're raising an issue that we intend to get a little bit more information out to those.
The owner is liable.
I understand.
No matter what.
Yes.
Then he should be notified.
I would agree with you.
My son was notified, I would have paid that bill for him.
Understand.
And I'm going to. But a lot of owners are in this situation. They don't know that they can, you know, expect some notices sent to them.
I understand that concern, and I think what we're going to do a better job of, or a more complete job, is once again, go out to the property owners and make them aware that they can be copied on the water bills as well.
Now, in this situation, this ex-wife that's living there, she signed the papers. Why shouldn't she be responsible for this?
That's a question I can't answer for you. That would probably be a legal question. I just don't have the ability to answer that with any kind of validity.
Yeah, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Our staff will be getting with you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Mr. Burns.
Yes, Thomas Burns. So I basically came to stand in these two guys' corner a little bit here, and this is really atrocious. And so I'm going to recommend that you do not pass that resolution and put the property owner on. Under COVID, guys, you're living under communism now, so just to let you know, okay? That's the new communism platform. But definitely, I think the city should do a better job to notify the owners, and I don't think that this should be passed, okay? At all. If we got money at the city to give to, you know, the arts and this and that, I'd rather see the city eat it than the property owner eat it. So that's my opinion on the matter. And I really think you guys are being watched on this one. And I also want to recommend to the guys that are here, you know, you should come more often, you know? It's your civic duty.
Yes, sir, please, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in the same board, you know, as these guys.
Can you please just give us your name?
Okay, my name is Gurkirat Biling.
Thank you.
Gurri Biling, yes. So I'm in the same board. I own a property here, which I'm renting out. So I got a notice like a month ago that, okay, my tenant's stopping to the city now. I owe that like eighteen hundred dollars for, you know, all that, not just for this, I believe, so what is also ecology charges, I think, you know? It's, so I, this all happened due to COVID, right? They are getting, so I lost, like out of, I start, they reduced my hours, so I was working for three days, I was off two days, and that my tenant did not, she was in a medical field, she had, there was no income loss, and she stopped paying this, although I was lucky, she was paying the rent, although she was late, like two months late, you know? But eventually, I learned that, two months ago, that, okay, I owe so much money, and there was no notice before that, you know? So it's totally injustice, even if we speak it loud, it seems like it's totally injustice. And it's not going to stop here, and that socialist moron going to keep this going further and further. Like, the three months, they have given three more months. Now, they're not going to pay that, I'm going to pay their water bills, and all the other, you know, all other charges, bill, you know, the ecology. So the question is, how, if they're going to keep going, doing this thing, when is it going to stop? They're not paying, they're going to stop paying rents, and we are responsible about their bills, right? So it does not make any sense at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Vince Burns, and I just wanted to get up here and say I stand with these people on this issue. I think most of us all do. And correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you say it was municipal code that it was put on the landlord, not the tenant?
That's correct.
Is that something that could be changed by our municipal code, or by the code?
Municipal code does have the option, or we do have the option of modifying the municipal code, yes.
So can't we change the municipal code to put it on the tenant instead of landlord?
I think that that's a possibility, of course. I don't know the exact history of the owner being responsible, but at some point, someone has to pay for the water.
I agree.
And the situation that has been, that we are finding ourselves in as a city, isn't one that we totally control, as I think we've explained that.
I understand that.
But we still had the service that we delivered and water that was delivered, and/or sewer, and in the other gentleman's case, garbage service that was delivered.
I understand that. I just wanted to stand up here and say I stand with these guys, and I think it's, it should be changed in municipal code to be the tenant's responsibility to pay the bill. Thank you.
Thomas Burns back again. I want to remind the council and the people that for quite a few years, the shopping cart owners were penalized for having their carts stolen, right? We remember that here. We discussed it in these chambers, and that seems to be how they do things sometimes. But they penalized, not in this council, but it was prior councils, where they penalized the owner for having his stuff stolen. And this is upside down in everybody's frame of thought on what's right and what's fair.
Any other comment from the public?
So my name is Suji. So I just wonder if every penalty go to the owner, and in the future, nobody want to rental house? So the Yuba City were difficult to find a house to rental. So if tenants don't pay water and just let owner to pay, I think that's unfair for owner. So we are no rich people, we still have money, we still have a lot of loan, we still need to pay a bill, we don't have too many money to pay if tenants don't pay. Okay, like this gentleman, the tenant don't pay rental, tenant don't pay water, he lost a lot of, that's right. He lost a lot of, that's really unfair for owner.
Well, this may not be a popular statement to make, but it's not fair for us to deliver the water without getting payment either, right?
Yeah.
How about shutting it off?
We can't do that because of, no, 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 I appreciate, yeah.
That government, California government, but I think this policy need change. We cannot do anything. We let, we let you pay and they don't want pay, we cannot do anything. I have another question. Can we eviction by didn't pay water? Can we eviction people if a tenant don't pay?
Mr. Mayor, can I answer that question?
Yes, please.
First caveat, I represent the city. I do not represent any landlords. But the general rule is, it depends on your contract. So if I were a landlord, I'd be very careful about what was in my contract and specify many things, including a deposit for utilities. I would be making sure that I receive notice on those utilities. I would put in that I could evict or withhold my security deposit as part of that process. So as between the city, the landlord and the tenant, the person who has most control as to whether a tenant pays is the landlord because they can adjust the contract. And in most situations, you would be able to evict if it weren't for these state laws and other things that have come in and inhibited your ability to do so. So make sure you have a very good contract.
We have, we have contract ready that tenants pay all utility. We have that contract. If a tenant doesn't pay, like the tenant right now, 1,600 didn't pay, can we by this reason to eviction?
You may be able to evict if you're not barred by state law. The other thing is, is even after the tenant leaves, if they still owe you money, under your contract, you have the ability to go against them, say, in small claims court. If it's less than, I think it's $7,500, and to get a judgment against them. The city does not have that ability to enforce like the landlord does. So it may be, there's a saying, you can't get blood from a stone. Some tenants, it's not worth your time and money, they're never going to get money from them. Other ones, if you go and get a judgment and record it, that can go against them for 10 years. So if they buy any property and end up selling it, if there's any real property that they have, that judgment goes against them and you have to eventually get paid with interest. So there are some options for you. My suggestion is, is if you believe that you are owed money by a tenant, look at your contract and then go to the Superior Court. And they have, they should have a website that talks about small claims court. And you might have some options there as well. Because just because we can't shut off water doesn't mean that that money's still not owed to you if you have to end up paying.
Yeah, the thing is, if possible, my tenants is okay. I just a generous question. If they leaving there, they didn't pay water, they live, like this gentleman, the tenant already leaving there one year, didn't pay anything. And the next year, three years, didn't pay anything, still living there. We cannot eviction, can we eviction them?
Again, I can't advise you, and it depends on state law because we've had these emergency orders from COVID. But under normal circumstances, you could evict. And even if you can't evict, you can still proceed to collect against certain people. So, and that's typically done in small claims court. You may want to consult with an attorney regarding your options. I know it's more money and I know you guys have been through tons of expenses, but it may be worth it. The other things you can do is you can report, there are certain things you would comport, credit checks and for people who haven't paid you. But it depends on your contract and it depends on the amount of money that's owed. And the general rule of thumb is, is if you can go to small claims court, that's great. But generally, unless you're out of, if you're more than that $7,000, whatever small claims court is, unless you have $30,000 or $40,000 you're owed to it, it doesn't make sense to go to court. It's too expensive past that amount.
But even small claim, but he said, I don't have money, they still don't pay. Thank you very much.
Through the mayor, city attorney, if, hopefully you might know the answer, or Mr. Morrison. Going back to all the comments, I mean, I agree with the comments other, Vince, it's good to see you again, sir. I hadn't seen you in a while. But I also agree with what the mayor said. We have a fiduciary responsibility to the residents of the city. So, you know, it's, we're in a quagmire. Because any normal year, if the tenant's not doing things, you evict them, you're able to raise your rents. This becomes a small issue in the big scope of things. But the one part that I was just bringing up to the mayor that I want clarification on is we've been dealt a hand of cards that says you can't raise rents beyond a certain percent. You can't evict people, we can't shut off water. And then through all of this, likewise, they've come out with the cowl rents or whatever it is to where you can apply. And I believe I've heard through the channels that I've had that it's not just the tenant that can apply for that, that the landlords can actually help and apply on behalf of the tenant to get your money back that you're missing, plus get the, help get the utilities back that are outstanding. So I feel for your troubles and I feel for all of you guys with what's going on. But that's a huge piece. And I'm not sure if there's anyone here, Mr. Attorney or Mr. Morrison, that can help these people with this because it's beyond just the delinquent water fees. You guys have bigger problems that maybe we can give you some direction for what's out there at the state level.
So Vice Mayor, there are programs available and we can definitely research those and put them out on our website as well as notify the folks in the audience as well as those on the list. We don't control those. Those are county operated typically or state operated. However, we will get the information and make sure that we share that with you. And there are a lot of generous programs out there trying to help with owners as well as renters. So I will work on that and have that out later this week.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Spencer, can you, one of your slides, you had a program that's, we're going to apply for as a city?
It's the second bullet point, that we will apply when it's available. This program is newly announced. I think just in the last couple of weeks, we saw it come through. And so the program isn't quite ready for use yet.
Yeah, I think that the concerns I have with this particular adoption of the resolution is that we're penalizing people that are possibly, you know, just not the right people to be penalizing. And at one time, you know, Thomas, you made the comment that, or Vince, I don't know who made it, but there was discussion because some of the HR 113, is that the ARPA monies, that part of those monies were also to help utilize, to assist in these, as cities were finding deficits in programs. So we could use some of those federal funds to offset some of the expense of this $277,000. We've had discussions about that. And I think that maybe there's an opportunity to extend the timing and work closer if some of these landlords are just finally discovering or being notified of these issues. Maybe extending this for a few more months to try to resolve more of these cases and see if we have monies through some of our federal funding that we receive to offset some of the expenses. I truly don't think that penalties is something that we could quickly, you know, work with those landlords that, you know, present themselves. But I'm just not in support of how the full recommendation is just loaded towards the landlords and understanding the complexities of the tenants and the relationship with landlords at this point.
What would be, a follow-up to Councilwoman Espendola's comments, what would be if we delayed this a bit to do a little more research in regards to, I don't remember the numbers now, it's been a bit, in regards to how many of these property owners, I hate to use the word legitimately, but are impacted by our inability to shut the water off because the bill wasn't paid? I mean, is there a way for us, Katrina or Spencer, to figure that out?
Not with 100% certainty, no. I mean, we can make our best guess as to why things happened, you know? But I do know that most of the accounts on the list this year, opposed to 2019, are active accounts. Whereas in previous years, they're closed accounts where we couldn't get collection on final bills. So that tells me that it has a lot to do with COVID and not doing shut offs because, you know, various reasons.
I mean, the bills aren't going to go away if we take a little bit of time to do a little bit more research and figure out.
No, but what we are up against is the deadline with the county. I have to have this submitted the first week of August.
Okay. To get it on this tax roll. And if we missed that deadline, would it just then be moved over till the next tax roll?
Next year.
One year.
And these bills continue to grow every single month, as someone mentioned. These are all active accounts, so they continue to grow.
Right, but at this particular point in time, municipal code, and it's not going to get changed here tonight, can't legally, requires the owners to be the responsible party. What I guess I'm trying to figure out is if we, if we take a little time, figure out how many of these cases that we actually have with property owners who, and I'm not putting you on the spot here, how many are just becoming aware that their tenants haven't paid with these $1,400, $1,800 bills? That, and I know you've been working on payment plans, et cetera, with some of those folks. It just seems that, you know, this isn't something that a lot of them created. You know, this is something that's being created by, you know, Sacramento. And I'd like to see if we can't maybe help them a bit navigate through this. I mean, there's two examples, at least two examples here tonight that would appear to me got caught in a situation that I understand.
Yeah, and in those cases, I would be, I would more encourage to reach out to us directly so we can set up second, you know, secondary plans with them.
Right. But we also have this other thing that's orbiting out there, which may be some financial assistance. I guess my only concern is a property owner may not qualify. If it's a low income thing, it may be, and those, I just don't know the answer to those questions.
There is the active program Housing is Key that's been active for several months now. And that is open for tenants for the utility relief. But it's also for property owners to go and get rent relief. And I would love to see more people take advantage of that. We've had flyers going around for months now. It's on our website. There's lots, there's funding out there that's available.
So we had something like 219 of these cases, is that correct? Was that, was that how many delinquent bills you said that were out there?
No, it's more than that. I think there's 242.
Okay.
Yeah, it's down, less than that. We've had quite a few payments this week and payment plans. So it's down around 220 now.
Katrina, do you know how long, once, let's say a landlord or a tenant applies, how long does the turnaround for the state to notify, because we know how long they take, to notify that they qualify and payments, you know, going to happen? Do you know how long that period is taking?
Yeah, the one that we were notified of, I think it was a three to four week turnaround for the tenant to find out they were approved. And we haven't seen the funds yet. And that was at the beginning of this process, so it's been probably another three weeks.
And do we still continue to penalize even if they know, if we know that we, that they're approved? Do you know those penalties still being added or not?
We haven't done any penalties since February of 2020.
Okay, all right, thanks. So the, so the process takes up to three to four weeks? And then when the check lands in our, it takes another two or three weeks after that?
I think, to follow up to that question, we move them on to a pending payment plan file so that they are removed if they let us know that they're approved. We moved them to a pending status and they are not on the lien last.
Can I have one more question? Thank you. My situation is, be extra, extra tenant earn money and didn't pay. And right now, my, right now, current tenant cannot transfer his name to the, to my, to the house. The city don't allow, allow my right now tenant to transfer. So he pay, water bill is under my name. Is possible city allow him transfer his name on the house, on the rental house?
I don't think that's going to solve your problem, but.
Not knowing the specifics of your account, but typically when it's required to stay in a property owner's name, it's because there's previous debt history at the account and we do not allow future tenants to sign up for service in their name. We do allow for a duplicate copy of the bill to go to the tenant, but they are not allowed to put it in their name primarily.
The problem is if under my name, he cannot application the high, the assistant, low income, low income assistant.
If he has a dual on the account, he does get a copy of the bill and that would be sufficient.
Oh, he cannot, he can do that?
If he has a dual, yeah.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're doing a good job, Katrina, thanks. Okay, any other comments from the council?
One question, Mr.
Yeah, please, go.
Katrina, under those 220 accounts, is all of that debt really just occurred during the last, you know, 18, 19 months of COVID? Or do they go back prior to that?
There's a handful that are older than that from previous sign outs that haven't been leaned yet, that still have the same owner. But that's maybe 10 accounts.
So the vast majority of this is during this pandemic time, okay?
It seems to me, and this is just for consideration and it's taken into, to consideration to the public comments, comments that you raised, Councilwoman Espendola. A quick conversation over here as well is that we have this quarter of a million bucks, I guess, out there that that is delinquent. I'm sure some of that is probably what I would consider to be true delinquent. And I would say a good portion of that may be folks that are caught in the situations that we've talked about. I would like the council to discuss maybe pushing this off for a bit. I realize that there's an August 1 deadline. But I think that there are some programs out there that might help us navigate through some of this stuff and provide some relief to the property owners. But I also know that, you know, some of those, some of those situations are legit. What we would be potentially missing is the revenue. But there's no, there's no guarantee that we're going to get that revenue until there's, the tax liens are paid anyway, which could be a long time. I don't know, thoughts?
Through the mayor. You know, there's a lot of looming deadlines ahead of us. We've got a thing happening mid-September that could change California's landscape. Then you got the rent moratorium that's supposed to end possibly September 30. The program I was talking about earlier was the COVID-19 rent relief program. And I go back to where we've been through COVID itself. And this city and this council has taken an education approach, really from day one, from educating our business owners and such. So my question or suggestion would be, can we use this as an education opportunity, Mr. Vaughn, to help those 220 property owners through an education process of giving them the time to apply if they're eligible through the COVID-19 rent relief to not only collect what needs to come to the city, but what they're due as well because it benefits the entire city as a whole. Because it's not just a quarter million dollars in utility fees. You've got, you know, anywhere from 12 to 17 or 19 months worth of rent. They've probably been carrying on mortgages. There's all kinds of things going. And one thing that was always questioned when the governor did his moratorium on the collection of rents was, you can't collect them, but nobody ever said they weren't going to come due one day. So we still got that, you know, shoe to drop at some point. My suggestion would be in light of everything that we have and the city is in a good place right now because of all the hard work we've done the last few years as a council. we've done the last few years as a council, is let's give it the next several months for this to really work itself out. Because as you said, we can always tack it on to next year's tax roll. And that gives not only the city time to work through it, but it gives the property owners time to work on it as well. That's just my two cents worth.
I concur.
If I may, I think that does make sense, the education approach. It kind of, it's in line with what we've already demonstrated we're willing to do in this case. And two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, why it's not a small amount of money. In the bigger picture, I think we have some room to do more of the right thing. Katrina, you've already done quite a bit of effort to keep folks, like Spencer said in the very beginning, you put a lot of work to keep people from on this list to begin with. I know it just doesn't happen. There's a lot of opportunity to remove them. Some people have taken advantage of that. And landlords, it's true, when you go into a business as a landlord, you take risk. This is one of them. However, I think we do have the opportunity to maybe enlighten some folks who maybe weren't aware of the, of more options that are out there up to and maybe including, considering our ordinance. As a former landlord myself, I had a really difficult time with being responsible for this. Anyway, when people didn't pay their bill, I didn't think it was right that I had to cover it. It's a lot cleaner that we add it to the tax bill. It's a lot cleaner for us, but sometimes the right thing is not the cleanest of the way to do it. And so although much, very much appreciation of the work that you do and the efforts you do in communicating the programs and the relief that's available for landlords and tenants, I think, given what we've heard tonight, it would be a good idea to extend it out a few months. We can wait a year for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, particularly when we have other opportunities to get the money back. I am not in favor of handing these tenants who are intentionally delinquent the money and say, you know, that's okay. I would like to try to figure out a way to deal with that and make them accountable. But I also don't want to unduly burden our landlords because it's not their fault.
I'm good. Thank you, gentlemen.
I think you have some direction from us. I would prefer not to move ahead with the public hearing and just push this. But that seems to be consensus as well.
Okay, so what, I think what staff is hearing is that you did conduct a public hearing, but you, the comments that you heard, you're not moving forward with the item. You're deferring that and directing staff to provide further education to the folks on this list, as well as others, to try and educate them and give them the ability to get recovery, either for rent, but also more importantly, you know, an opportunity to learn more about how to get, you know, the proper, you know, bills paid and how that works with those folks. And so staff will take that direction and move forward and provide an update to the council in forty-five days.
I think I would add to that, that, and hopefully not, not too much of a burden is, maybe a little bit of history of the why of the municipal code and why it was placed on the property owner. I'm sure there was good reasoning there. I'm assuming there was. It would be interesting to know more about that rather than make a, you know, snap judgment on that.
Happy to provide that. Mayor also recognized that our garbage vendor also provides services and also has lien capabilities through the same ownership and municipal code process. So we'll bring that back for a report and update.
Thanks. Thank both of you. Thank you to the speakers.
I know we're done talking about it, but I learned the hard way on this. In some cases, this is why some apartment buildings or some landlords, they include water and trash in the rent. And they pay the water and trash out of the rent to avoid things like this. Just maybe a consideration, they bumped the rent up a little bit to cover that, an option.
Well, we think, we think that some of these state imposed things are going to be lifted. And then again, that's back to the landlord and it's not something that we're involved with, with the water and the sewer rates.